Okay, now we can't talk about anything for a minute. Thanks.
Sorry.
Is there a date for the letters to be turned in by?
Thursday, September twenty nine.
Oh.
August, August, yeah.
I was gonna say, okay.
That's our.
Okay, seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the village board meeting to order. I'd look for an approval of the agenda. So. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, most carries. Item three, public appearance of citizens' comments on items not listed on this agenda. Items will not be debated or acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff and committee if action is required. Please keep your comments of three minutes. And I guess we're gonna have Amy give a little update for bribery right now.
So, um, basically, we are still waiting to hear on the grant. We have until October first, let us know. In the meantime, we have put out an RFQ to get some qualifications from architects and design teams. Those will be coming in Thursday, the twenty second, that's in a couple days. And, um, the twenty ninth, the building thinking will be needing to go over the RFQs. After that, later that day, the library board will also go over and rate those RFQs. Um, and we are working on the environmental community to get that underway and taken care of. Should we get the grant, we just want to be prepared and ready to go to meet that deadline, September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Out where we're at.
Okay. Hey Larry, did you have anything to add? No, okay. So, you want?
Yes, uh, my grandson was here. And when they asked him what was the nicest thing that happened to him during the three weeks that he was here, he said free swim. But where he comes from, they all have to swim in lanes all the time. And their ability to jump in from the side struck him as a remarkable opportunity.
I thought you meant that he snapper, and I was like, oh. I'm gonna be sending you a bell, sorry.
Just wanted to know my grandson had a good time.
Great, good.
And paid out of state tuition, too.
Oh, good.
It is a nice. Okay, moving on, item four, approval of the consent agenda. I move to consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have something to ask Jeff, one question on that denial. Can, if he would, can he apply? If he would disclose, or is there a list of stuff that he?
I think he has in the organs.
Uh, he'd have to appeal it.
Oh, he'd have to appeal this?
Yep.
Decision, okay.
I mean, otherwise he'd have to wait so long to.
I don't know how long it is for an official.
I.
I know the operator license you gotta wait.
I think that operates a year. Um, I'd have to look, but yeah, I mean, I think there's, yeah, I think there's.
How do we notify this person?
He gets a letter, so all of our denials for anything, get a letter from our office, and you were denied because of this.
And then they can.
And send them letters, what their options are.
Very good.
You know what it means to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You are.
Okay. Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, most carries. New business, item eight, consideration discussion, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine capital improvement plan draft. It's on page twenty four. You ready, Mark?
Yep.
Go ahead.
All right, um, so last year, the village board approved a twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight CIP. It was our first five-year CIP. Um, the beauty of the CIP is that each year you can update it based on changing priorities and what's needed. And so we're going through that process again. Um, so this is a draft plan, I'm hoping to get feedback from the village board on it. Um, this is no way in stone, but I think what's important is, you know, getting feedback. Um, and then really solidifying twenty twenty five projects, because that will impact our budget moving forward in twenty twenty five. Um, you'll notice on page twenty five, I have a memo, um, very similar to last year. I, um, I, I highlight some changes. Oh, and you know what, I said I would include last year's CIP, and I didn't, so I apologize. I will, the next time we talk about this, I will include, so you can compare the two. But the major changes, um, on this CIP include, I added the police department roof replacement in twenty twenty five. Um, Jeff and I actually just met with a roof contractor, and it's likely gonna be more than fifty thousand. So some changes are gonna have to happen there. Um, secondly, I swapped Third Avenue Phase Three and Eleventh Avenue reconstruction projects. Um, unfortunately, Eleventh Ave is deteriorating significantly. And I think the, and Peggy and I were talking about this Third Ave, the patch or the overlay that we did is holding up fairly well. And so our engineer and, you know, I would recommend swapping the two projects, because I think Eleventh Ave has become our most dire area in town, unfortunately. Um.
I want it on the record that I didn't ask for this. But Jane Elmer did.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, our engineer agrees, it's, it's.
Well.
With the most recent rain that we had, where it ripped up.
The intersection, you can see that there's a manhole cover in the middle, and there are four lines intersecting. And when the way, the water pressure, there's geysers coming out of those four lines. Water is being forced up from underneath, because the pipes are too small.
Um.
So, thank you, I'll call Jason.
Um, some other, uh, major changes, I updated the library project totals to reflect the possibility of receiving that grant. Obviously, if we don't receive the grant, we're gonna have to revisit that. Um, but for now, we can start planning other stuff in that year. Um, and again, that's the beauty of the CIP, you can tweak things as, you know, things change. Um, additionally, in twenty twenty eight, I added the fire truck replacement. Um, they haven't given me a firm year on that, they said twenty seven or twenty eight. I would put it twenty eight, because it fits in our borrowing better. So for now, I'm leaving it in twenty eight, and we might have to revisit that again as well. Um. Additionally, uh, in the memo, I talk about debt service levy impacts. I think it's important to remind the board that paying our debt is not subject to levy limits. Um, so we have some flexibility on taking on additional debt that we don't in our operational budgets. Um, however, we are limited, uh, debt-wise with our debt capacity. Um, and we have a policy at the village on our debt capacity. So there's a state statute that limits us to five percent of our equalized value, and then our policy is seventy five percent of that legal limit. Um, so I included some analysis that Eller's completed on the CIP that shows with this proposed plan where we are with that capacity. You can see that on page.
Twenty one.
Well, the third page of Eller's analysis, you could see, um, that graph there that shows the debt limit analysis with this proposed plan in twenty twenty nine.
What picture you are?
Twenty.
This one, this one, the last, okay, the last.
There.
Yes, that one.
Got it, got it.
So that graph shows in twenty twenty nine, we're hitting our limit at seventy five percent. So, um, keep that in mind, with this proposed plan, we are getting right up to that limit. However, if you go back, sorry, I'm jumping around here, if you're going back, you'll see that in my table in the memo, I show you guys what the levy increase would be needed each year with the debt. And then, this is something we talked about last year, we actually have a debt service fund that we can apply to that levy to kind of help balance out how much we're increasing taxes each year, um, to that fifty thousand dollar mark, which is what we talked about last year. Um, so you'll see each year, you know, our debt is requiring us to increase, so like twenty twenty six, our debt is requiring us to increase by eighty nine thousand, six hundred. But we can apply almost forty thousand of our debt service fund, so that leaves fifty thousand dollars that needs to be increased in property taxes. Um, so, all of that to say that you'll see on that table, once you get to twenty thirty, we have basically no levy increase, because we're basically hitting that, um, debt limit there. Um, and so, um, Dave, our financial advisor, kinda made a note that, yeah, we're hitting that twenty twenty nine debt limit, but we have some levy, or we have some, um, yeah, levy capacity, not levy capacity, we can, that net levy increase, there's some capacity, we're not hitting the fifty thousand, so we could pay off, we could, uh, increase our principal payments on our debt to basically create more, um, capacity for future projects.
Now, take that last sentence.
Yeah.
And I'm on the page with the, uh.
Graph.
Existing principal, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, wh- wh- when the, the dotted line, I mean, the thing that says forty one, forty, sixty one, so that's projects on the list, right?
Which one, the, the graph?
Yeah, the graph thing.
Yep, so that, um.
But so what's the green, then? That says new.
New, yeah, so the blue is our existing debt, like if we didn't borrow anymore. And then the green is additional debt that we take on, so that CIP, basically, so all those projects we're gonna be doing the next five years.
Goes, goes slower.
So the, the blue on the graph.
Got the blue, that's existing.
Yep, and then the green is the CIP projects. So additional debt that we take.
Eleventh Avenue.
Public Works.
Library.
Right. So, but then, okay, so, so then what's the next one? What's the dotted line?
So then.
That is reflecting where that green stuff is?
It's showing the percentage of that seventy five percent of the limit.
So, uh, the forty percent relates to twenty twenty five, right at the niche there where the green changes the angle.
Um, the forty percent shows how much of our debt asset we're using in twenty twenty five, between old principal and new principal. So we're using forty percent. So we have thirty five left to go before we hit that seventy five.
Well, you don't wanna take that, I don't understand your graph, I'll come and talk to both.
Lauren, yeah, I have a question. Um, so for the fifty thousand dollar net levy increase for property taxes, do you have any, I know everyone's different, do you have an average of what that raises? Someone's property taxes, like one family, the one else, yeah? Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good question. Um, I don't have the fifty thousand mark. So, um, Dave had shown on this first table here, what, an eighty nine thousand dollars? So not if we apply the debt service fund, it would be eighty seven dollars per year. I can add to him what, yeah, I see it, you see that? So for, yeah, for a house of two hundred and seventy five thousand, it would be eighty seven dollars more now. So obviously, we can let, yeah, because we're gonna cut that off, okay, I was just curious.
So I can find out that number for you, yeah. Well, and honestly, it probably isn't be close to that, because the average value of a house is more than that.
More, yeah, yeah.
But eighty seven dollars a year is a lot easier to swallow than hundreds of dollars, so I was just curious to see what the.
Well, that's one thing, when, you know, Laura and I have stepped into this, we wanted to keep a consistent tax levy, whereas before, we were kinda doing up and down thing, which was great on the down years, but it was horrible on high years. Um, so this, at least people can budget and plan for, and we're able to fit in some of those smaller projects that probably should have been done years ago.
Gotcha.
Um.
Basically, the same philosophy as school, yes, good. Better keep the tax.
Yeah.
Ready to sing.
Well, and their tax dollars are being used for, I mean, for projects that need to be done, you know?
Yep.
It's not just being put in a, a savings account or whatever, yeah. Um, so going back to the CIP itself and the projects, um, I guess one other thing I failed to highlight is, I also added a village hall renovation, uh, in ADA entrance into point twenty six. Um, that is because if the library moves out, we will have some additional space. And, um, those halls could definitely use some TLC, um, and we have some additional debt capacity that year to take that on. So, um, obviously, that, again, contingent upon library getting the grant and having those additional funds available, but I think that would be a great use of funds that year.
Where did you come up with that number, is that just like a placeholder number for, yeah?
Yeah. I could be way more, um, oh, the other thing I'll mention, too, is I included the ADA entrance. So, um, we found out through an election inspection that our back door that we use for elections is not ADA compliant. Um, it's like slightly too, um.
Too much compliant.
Too much compliant. Um, and so we looked at maybe getting that done sooner rather than later, but it's way more cost efficient if we add it to a street project. So that's why I slotted it in twenty six, because we're doing Eleventh Ave that year, so I'm hoping we can just add it to that construction project, and it'll be much cheaper. They're already out here doing pavement, so. Um, so I think, um, oh, obviously, I'd love any feedback on this, um, but again, I'll emphasize, point twenty five is really the year to get things squared away relatively soon. Um, the other thing, one other thing I'll highlight, and then I'll actually let you guys talk about this, but, um, like I mentioned, we just had a meeting on the PD roof replacement, and it's likely gonna be more than fifty K. Um, so something I've been toying around with and talking with some staff is maybe not fully replacing the public works garage, but instead, you know, doing improvements to the garage, so, you know, doing some roof, um, repair, so it's not leaking. I think there's some mold in the roof, maybe we can get that mediated somehow. Um, I, I think structurally, it's fine, it's just really the roof and water getting in. And so, you know, are there more cost-effective ways to address that than just completely replacing the garage? That might free up some dollars in that, next year that we could use towards other needed things. Um, love, I would love the village board's feedback on that. Um, I know I've been prioritizing this, because it does not look good in there, but if there's ways that we can more cost-effectively fix that, I think we might wanna do that.
What kind of roof does it have right now?
Metal, just like I said.
Okay.
When do we start looking at the budget for twenty twenty five?
So we'll have, um, committee meetings next month, which we may push back a little, we'll see, we're, we're, we're working on it. Uh, but committees will look at like their particular budgets, like Parks will look at Parks budget. Um, in October, we'll have two budget sessions, where the first budget session is usually more focused on general fund, and the second one is more focused on utilities. Uh, we have other funds that get thrown in as well. And then November, we'll have a public hearing at the first meeting, and then we'll adopt the budget at the second meeting. So you will have multiple times to look at this. Um, but a lot of communities do the CIP before they even get into the budget process, because the twenty, figuring out your twenty twenty five capital projects is kind of nice.
Enforce the budget share.
Figure out, um, and, you know, there's a lot of information to take in when you're doing budget process, so if you can get this squared away, then you're not having to, you know, figure out CIP and all the other stuff.
Like this and major and render, like two major factors to kind of navigate the rest of the budget, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna just mention, when we talk about the village hall, I just remember it coming up over the years, you need to really look at the foundation, because that came up oftentimes, um, with those old works, so if we're gonna rehabilitate this, we might as well start from the ground up. You know, that's gonna be the expensive part, but maybe there's some new technology out there that can help our, or we do this kind of thing.
Yeah.
And once I see the base, then it looks scary.
I've been down there for a couple of times.
Unfortunately, with one point two million, we're probably not gonna get very far.
No.
So I think we actually really selected and.
You do.
What we wanna tackle, um, and.
But maybe there's a few, they might have some efficient suggestions that would.
Yeah.
Jeff said, how much are we paying down on debt each year, you gotta just remember.
Um, well, you can kind of see it, yeah, you can kind of see it on the, I don't have a dollar number necessarily, but you can kind of see it on the graph, so. Um, that blue portion are existing, so it, it takes a steady, you know. Um, I can get you the exact numbers, um.
So, we're about six million.
Right, yeah, we're six million this year, about five.
Five.
Yep, we are, we're gonna pay seven hundred and twenty three thousand, seven forty six on debt next year. And we have some older, like this year, I think there's, we have a street project that is coming off, that we're done paying on, I just, yeah.
So, yeah, that's another thing to mention, twenty twenty six is a big year, because a lot of debt comes off, and that's why we.
Yeah.
Put a lot of stuff in that year.
Yeah.
So if you're wondering, why do we have a bunch of stuff that year, that's why.
If the fire department has their own budget, why do we have to replace their fire truck?
We.
I'm serious, not even joking.
So, um, it's a fire district, so, um.
Half a million dollars.
Yeah.
That's only half of it.
Yeah.
That's the front half.
Yeah.
It's a million dollars.
We just got a new one, too, not very.
That is. Yeah.
Do it in terms of not brand new, right?
I think.
Fire district, we pay them whatever that contract amount is, and we help them replace their fire trucks.
Well, so the problem is, we don't have a contracted amount, I think that's really important for the board to know, is that when the fire district, per our contract with the district, they are supposed to present the budget every year in September. The village has every right to say, you know what, no, we can't afford that, like, see what you can do to get down to this. I mean, we do that with all of our other departments internally, so I think it's something that the village board, and I'm not, I'm not saying cut right, but like, I think if you're gonna look at cutting the PD and cutting public works, I mean, it's only fair. And I think the, the sense around it has been, whatever they tell us, we have to pay, and that's not true.
Some of those vehicles are twenty five years old.
I'm not saying.
Sure, and I think we should replace my surprise to see it on the budget.
When we are a district, everyone contributes.
Based on equalized value, yes, us and the town leaders that are the main contributors to the fire district, and then all the little townships throw in there portion two. So, I mean, it's fairly distributed in terms of like equalized value.
Sure.
Um, if you believe equalized value is fair, which that's really the only thing we have to go off of, but I just want to make sure the board understands, like, any other department that we look at, the fire district is no good one. I mean, if I were them, I would ask for everything that I would want.
Sure.
And not necessarily expect it, but why wouldn't you ask for it, you know?
Do you have a fire district meeting, whatever it's called, before you're done? Is there one coming up?
Uh, depends on, hopefully, we get somebody to my session.
Can you ask them for the budget for us?
They are still working on it, they're applying that.
Okay.
So, it, it'll be available at our next meeting.
Perfect.
It's just.
It comes in.
It just comes into like a very close, like, we get it, and then I got to turn it right away, you got to allocate it.
And we requested, too, like, you know, to see the actual budget, because in the past, we've literally just seen what they want from each community, but we haven't seen, like.
Yeah, that's what I meant, I meant their whole budget.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's what we've had.
That's what I meant, their whole budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We've, I don't think. We've never ever seen line you do.
They do have a, do, um.
Secretary.
I, I, I don't know what their position is, they seem much more confident in regards to that, that acceptingness. Um, I have seen an improvement on, uh, their budget, but there is no line, I don't. But there is definitely an improvement that I've seen in the two months that I've been. So we've never actually seen, uh.
We've asked.
Actual budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Not like, when, when I was, I'm gonna get it, you can bring it. You guys, they all know what it is.
No, I haven't seen anything, I've not actually budgeted, never.
Roger the budget.
No, I've never seen a fire department line in a budget, I mean.
Fire department budget?
Never, I've seen what they want from us, I've never seen, like, this is how much our helmets are gonna cost, this is how much our salary, I have not seen.
It's right there, I gave it to you. Soon as they gave it to me, I gave it to you.
Mike just said they don't do.
So go and ask for it, I mean, there's nothing, there's no rea, they're not, they're not.
We haven't asked for it. We haven't.
Yeah, I don't remember, we, I remember asking over the years.
We've asked, we asked for this here as well.
I think I have something in my car, I'll be grabbing it.
Yeah. I'm saying that, I'm just, I'm just simply stating facts, I've never seen one, we've asked for one, hopefully they get that, because I think it'll help the board make more informed decisions, like they do with every other department. And maybe the board will say, yep, that's exactly what we need, and approve it, I mean, that's very possible. I just think we should look at them like every other department.
And they're supposed to be audited, what, every three years?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I think every year.
I think.
Every year?
Yeah.
I think so, but I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the kicker was to get them all on calendar year stuff, and we did that. Uh, so, the audit would come after December, about the same time our audit's coming through there.
These, uh, future projects down here, these are all just like, like the Holy Pond for six hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that you guys decided on, or you're just like guessing, or?
Um, that might have been a guess, I, well, it's a project that needs to be done, we just don't.
Yeah.
What's the project?
Um, well, there's been discussion on, like, a dock, uh, at one point, a gazebo. I think maybe I was pulling from like old plans or discussions on that. I mean, really, the future projects, a lot of these, I'm just kind of coming up with a number, um.
Well, and wasn't it something with Paul's, we ended like doing a digger deeper or something, just.
Yeah.
We did that, wasn't there a?
No. In the piece of area.
We, it was.
No, they, they.
I can't remember.
FFA.
FFA, yeah.
And I think, I think, if, if it ever gets to the point where they're gonna, uh, want to defuse or something, I think the FFA alumni still wants to be involved in it.
Yeah.
Because they've got funds for it, yeah, only, but nobody's been pushing the issue.
And maybe it's a cares thing, too, that maybe people who.
Yeah.
I went to the, I went to an FFA alumni meeting, and talked to them about this, and talked to Andy Milk, Hannah Melty, and then you talked to her, right? But nothing happened after that?
Um, so we decided, we thought the best next step would be to figure out what the issue is at the pond, because we've heard people say, oh, it needs to be dredged, or, oh, it needs an air cleaner, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and we're like, let's just have, like, somebody who's knowledgeable, take a water test to figure out what we need to do, and then go from there. So I think, like, if this is determined that we need to dredge, we have to go through the DNR, and et cetera, et cetera, so I just need some, like, actual professional to look at it and tell us what to do, and then.
Is Hannah supposed to find that?
Nope, I'm working on it, I reached out to our engineer to see if he had some leads on who I should reach out to for that, and that's where it's at now.
Well, so, had the wonderful experience of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they closed it down, and.
Their fish died last week.
Well, it really, it was a huge, um, change in direction, and what they did is, they cleaned it up, just by running it through, uh, that thing that comes out, on one end, and all the, um, grasses and stuff that are in there, cleaned it up, and the water, instead of being polluted from the road every time it rained, now comes out clean, very different experience, don't you? I mean, you'll get benefit from doing it right, but it ain't gonna be cheap.
Yeah.
So is there any more discussion on item eight? Because this is just a graph that you're doing.
The only thing I was gonna point out, so you guys know, on the replacement of the server, I'm sure that's gonna be a little bit more by, I'm working with my IT people, so I'm just brands out there, so I may be able to get right here. On the one, hopefully, a couple ones, and it might actually, so with the download, uh, squad cameras.
Cool. Are we ready to move on to item B?
Okay.
No, actually, I'm ready.
Yeah. Okay, item B, consideration professional twenty twenty five employee cost limiting adjustment. You're.
Yep.
Hey, Lauren, can I have that one, I can remind my.
This.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so, we previewed this, I think it's the last meeting, um, but Kelsey put together, Kelsey and Hannah.
Yeah.
Um, some costs for, uh, two percent and three percent, Cola, twenty twenty five. Um, keep in mind, this does not include fringe costs. Um, that was just too difficult for us to accurately.
The fringe costs are, are minimal compared to, I mean, because all, fringe-wise, the increase only affects those taxes, it doesn't affect health, dental, et cetera, et cetera.
So if you gave a three percent raise, the employee gets two, and fringe is one, round numbers, right? One third of this is.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Maybe it's even higher, maybe it's, well, maybe it's like sixty, forty, or something like that.
Well, the. The three percent is going to their wage, right? But he's saying that, but then the employee has to pay taxes on that, so.
Well, but, so then the three percent's going to wage, then this number is really four.
Right, so, yeah, like I'm saying, this is not include fringe, so there. We did, so, the, what we saw last year was a.
The, what we saw last year was a percentage increase on all fringe, which included benefits, which obviously now we know was, we shouldn't have done that, but like. We didn't realize it last year when we included it in. You know what I'm saying? Like, health insurance is gonna cost, what it costs, whether if you're making ten thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
So the only fringe that is impacted with the cost of living increase is the tax portion, Medicare. Uh, Social Security.
But also retirement.
And retirement, yep, you're right, yep, you're right.
And so round numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Health is half and taxes plus retirement are another half, round numbers.
Oh, I don't think.
I, I, when I looked at it, it looked to me like. Um, total cost of. Wages was a hundred and sixty-eight percent of. Salary.
Okay.
I, I, I didn't do it very detailed, so.
Well, the other.
But it was a lot of money.
Yeah, fringe is complicated too, because it depends if you're a union employee or non-employee in terms of what's paid in for W R S. Uh, um, or I should say a protected employee, because um even Jeff, though he's not.
No, I understand the theories. I'm just looking at the big picture. The big picture was.
So I'm just saying, it, it, it's not a, I mean, yeah.
If we had a hundred thousand dollars in salary, you had a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in cost. Does that strike you as? Fair?
Yeah.
Probably.
Rough.
If you're including health and everything.
I, I just took it off our budget. Here's salary and here's benefits.
So that includes health insurance, dental.
It works.
Yep.
Right, right. But that means that if. This three percent. If you, if you gave from the top employee thirty, you moved him uh, but like three dollars, three dollars, right?
Yep. That's because he, he's a. He's a.
That's an anniversary staff.
No, I understand, I understand, but then there's another dollar that goes for. Benefit.
Benefits.
So.
Which, and we're gonna have, I would say, more than half of that dollar is going to be with health and dental and, yeah.
I can't imagine it isn't. It's a little crazy.
Yeah.
So, um. Uh, trying to figure out how to make, give you a useful answer. Um. My, my guess is. The. These guys are all behind the curve. Right, and we're competing with.
Well, we saw that wage study that Lauren presented at the last meetings. I mean, some are, some are farther behind than others.
Yeah, but it didn't include us, right? It didn't include. It didn't have Green County people in it. It was, the last one I saw, you were out of, it was other communities.
No, it wasn't. It had thirteen communities that were. Similar.
Yeah, but that, but a lot of them were pretty shitty and places like that, you know, and all I'm really concerned about is what is Monroe and Monticello, you know, for purposes. Competition, that's, that's what we gotta look to.
Monroe, those are four times as high as possible.
All right, so, um.
Get the chat link.
This is gonna sound stupid. I just think. When you're doing your budget this year. You're gonna come up with something that says, these are the essentials. And that's how, this is how much in dollars we have. These are the essentials. These, here's a category of things. That are not insent- essential. We've paid them generally. I look at, when I'm paying the bills, I'm saying, why are, you know, why do we do this kind of thing? And, and, you know, there's just stuff that goes in there that gets treated as routine, so I'm just wondering whether. What you really gotta do is, is. Draw the budget between essential and non-essential. And then, then you derive as this decision, whether it's two and a half or three, and see how badly that cuts into non-essentials. I mean, I, I think we're gonna have to start making some sacrifices here.
Yeah, but the problem with that is we have to figure this out first to figure out the rest of the budget.
Right.
It's the first thing that goes in, unfortunately.
Fair enough, but, but you, you don't have to do everything. You just have to do one number, right?
I mean.
Well, like right here, if you did three, it would kind of come down to a million four, right?
It's, it's quite a bit of work on Kelsey to redo all this.
Yeah, I mean, these spreadsheets are like not as simple. I mean, they are extremely.
But what, what if we just stuck with this?
Yep, uh, well, I can't just say.
So this is.
This would be a pipe dream to stick with.
If, if here's, uh, why, why does?
Keep in mind that all of our employees are broken down in a million different ways and it's very complicated.
Like, this includes no overtime. This is literally just base salaries, and this is. Like, the top example is a good one. So, um, Brian is a union P, police officer who will meet an anniversary staff midpoint next year. So that's why in the, I always like to budget our expenses higher than, you know, I don't wanna be over budgeted. So we've budgeted him at his ten-year rate for the full year, just because there may be other people on here, because it, the last few years, we've had mid-year increases that we're not budgeting for. So I'm trying to.
Let me, let me just take.
Yeah.
The bottom line numbers here.
Yep.
These numbers are, there's too much detail for me to think straight.
Okay.
By the end of the day, you're ready to cut somebody's throat too. So I get a yearly salary down here under the total in the middle column, after the two and a half percent raise of a million four hundred and thirteen thousand.
Correct.
The extra half point only adds six thousand.
Five hundred, yeah, five thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, yep.
That's not so hard to read.
No, I think.
If it's only six grand.
I wouldn't feel, I think Lauren, I will feel, we didn't feel comfortable just saying, look, it's only six thousand dollars to go from two and a half to three. We wanted to make sure you understood what we, and once again, we're not saying you should do it, I mean, we're employees, so. But we wanted to make sure that there's no surprises when we get to the budget workshops, because there's not time at that point to change all this. But we wanna make sure that you guys understand that. Going from what we're paying out this year to a two and a half percent increase next year is costing just under forty-five thousand dollars, which I'm not saying we shouldn't do. Two and a half percent is nothing. But I also wanna make sure that I'm being extremely transparent. So yes, the jump from two and a half to three is not that much money, but when you look at.
Tell, go, go more slowly. So forty-four thousand increases is the two and a half percent increase, right?
Yeah, from what's paid this year.
Fifty thousand goes to the three.
No, fifty thousand is if we would go from this year, yeah, to the thirty-seven, yes.
Right, right. So it's between forty-four and fifty.
Yep, yeah, exactly.
So that goes to this business, so we've got things that you're just gonna have to not do. And I, I don't know what they are. You just gotta make your.
So.
Well, I mean, there are some things.
I think, but that, I think, I think the board also has to be very realistic. Like, we are going to bring you a list of things that could be cut or decreased. And a lot of them are not going to be. Easy or popular decisions. Um, I think the board needs to be prepared.
But the other part of the decision, the other part of the decision is treating employees fairly.
I completely agree. I'm just saying, I wanna make sure the board understands that. If we want to go with the three percent, which once again, boy, totally lost that, but if we go with that, and you're saying, well, just come up with the six thousand dollars cut. Most, if not all, of our departments have been running extremely lean, so when we bring this list of things to cut, I mean, it's not gonna be like. We're not ordering an extra box of cotton paper. I mean, we're cutting full things that be budgeted.
I did this for twenty years. I know the glue, the stuff that.
I just wanna make sure.
No, no, it's, it's setting budgets and then dealing with the consequence of the budget.
Yeah.
That's why you have doors on rooms. So I can slam them when you're going through them.
Yeah.
So I have a very unpopular, I'm sure it's gonna be a rip-your-head-off kind of reaction, but as we provide the increase for the staff. Then we have the cost of the Bennys, which is the health insurance, and I don't know, what did you say it was gonna increase?
Around eleven percent?
So that increases around eleven percent, so. Actually. Employees are also getting the benefit of the increase, you know, that we're paying that. Is there a way? To. Offset that, so we're not constantly burdened by that constant increase? I mean, are, are there changes?
So this will be on the list, this will be on the list that is presented.
I don't like that.
So this is on the list that we presented to you, because we have looked at everything.
Okay.
Um, the thing, I think the most important thing from an employee, now putting on my employee hat, that I would say on that is. I didn't leave the private sector to come here and like make a ton of money. I came here. Primarily because the benefits were so good. So my point, my point, it wasn't for you either, Bob, but you're, hold on a second. My point is that if we start cutting down how good our benefits are, and we still can't compete with our own hour and our own pay, why are people gonna wanna work here?
Right.
Because it's like, I can go to the private sector, get the same benefits, and take our money.
Yeah, I was just asking it out there, because I know.
Yeah, no, it's fair, it's totally fair.
When we did the interview, um. For the Public Works Director.
Yep.
You know, he was taking, or he's considering a considerable pay cut, but then we. I felt obligated to tell him, but look at, you know, what your benefits are, that you had none of this before, so. I get that. I, I get it, but I'm just saying, is there any way that we can? Can offset that somehow?
So we looked at even um different contribution rates, so right now, we, we pay the max that we can pay out of pocket, or the employer does, which is eighty percent. We looked at eighty-five or eighty or whatever, and it definitely adds money back into our budget to spend. But I did the math, for a person that has a family plan, it increases our health cost by a thousand dollars a year. Which, I mean, that's.
So it off.
It, to me, it doesn't make any sense to give them without, I mean, they.
Right.
I don't, I think a lot of people that work here are here, not only because of benefits, but that is a main factor. There are some that probably maybe aren't, but I would think a good majority of us are. Like, I don't think anybody comes into this looking to get rich. Nobody works in local government. Looking to get rich, and I'm not saying that that means we can't pay them, but. I think the benefits are like one golden ticket right now when we recruit people, and I'm afraid if we start messing with that, people are gonna be like, well.
That's a huge decision. I agree with a lot of what Kelsey's saying too. I mean, it is huge, the benefits are huge, and I don't wanna see them get attacked. Attacked, but part of it is like this wage study, when I heard about it, I got a copy of it, and then I went through it, and I started calling these. All these departments and getting what their raises are. And I don't think you're gonna wanna hear what they're getting, and from my understanding is, even the other, the, the uh utilities, the clerks, they're getting the same raise. So I, I know we keep hearing, there's no money, there's no money, but we are gonna start falling backwards and then trying to keep people too, and I. I mean, I, like Bellville last year, they got a eight percent raise, next year they're getting a five percent, twenty-sixth year getting a four percent. Edgerton, and these are all people that were in the study that you guys were given for twenty twenty-three, that showed twenty twenty-four numbers between players. Edgerton got a four point two percent raise and thirty-seven cents in twenty-five, they're giving three percent. Lake Mills got a five percent, five percent, five percent.
Is this P D or everybody, Jeff?
P D is what I can find out, but when I've talked to the chiefs and other people, they said a lot of the. The other entities get the same. Every year since I've been here, especially since unions went away, except the police department, whatever the police department fought for. Is usually what other people got. So like, like the P D next year is getting three percent. The officers are getting three percent. And you guys are looking at what they're presenting at one point is two point five or three, so the P D guys are getting more. You know, and then when all these people keep getting these raises mid-year, they're still now getting this three percent or two and a half too. So they're, they're getting hired, and you're getting over some of us.
How does it, how do your unions work? Don't your unions negotiate with?
They, they, they negotiate, and I think the village is gonna. When our contract, when the P D's contract is up in. Twenty twenty-five. You're gonna be shocked what numbers are going up everywhere. I mean, in percentages.
What?
But the other staff are getting the same too, and I know they keep saying there's no money. I hear some of these other, they don't have money, but they're just giving these raises, so I don't know if they're pulling it out of. Interest money they've made, or, you know, the other, other.
I mean, I hear how some places are cutting things. Um, I know Bellville's a great example. They cut police officers.
No, they didn't. They did not cut a police officer. I keep hearing that from people. They did not cut a, cut an officer. They just, go on their Facebook, it's on.
It's so weird.
Jeff, what, what were we hearing? I mean, we.
I couldn't hear that. They cut a position.
Yeah.
That's what the chief told Joe. I was, I listened to it on speakerphone from Bellville, because he called about a reference, and. He's like, yeah, did you hear we had to cut a position over here to fund public works? He, I literally heard it with my own ears.
They, they did not cut a position. If you go on their Facebook right now, they'll see they just hired a girl like three weeks ago. They did not cut a position.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
No, I'm just, I'm just making it clear.
But for comparison, wouldn't it be a good, if we look at in- increases to see, you know, as we talk about the golden um. Insurance Bennys.
Mm-hmm.
To look at what their insurance is. I mean, are they paying out? Like you said, okay, if we raise, if we change the insurance and your salary increase had to go for, you know, uh. Whatever.
So, yeah, so.
That's not really a salary increase. Like, hey, we're gonna not give you enough money, but we're gonna.
So if we're getting a percentage increase, what does their insurance look like?
Right, so I've asked that. I think Jeff and I talked about this, and he said, at least on the P D end, he, you know. It's, our benefits are somewhat similar. I know Bill came from Wanakee, and he said our benefits are better than Wanakee's. But their pay was more. So I, I, I literally think it's just, uh, what's your employees' value more?
It's where we're gonna come up with the money. I mean, I, I get everything everybody is saying, but we gotta start looking at this, because we're teetering a long way. I mean, all these places, I mean, they're getting way bigger raises than us. Like, if you're just looking at that study, they're going to overpass us, and I am scared. At my level, people are gonna leave. I'm not saying they will, but the village has gotta look at it. We're not even giving a talk of the raise, but this is in the last three years.
I would really encourage the board to look at all options before touching. I just think there's other. I, I hear what Jeff is saying, but I'm telling you, if we start messing with benefits, we're gonna have people that have been here and.
No, that's the golden draw.
And then try to break them down cheaper than what you were, you're not going to.
That's the golden draw that I don't want to, to, I'm just trying to think of a way to offset that in some other way, so. Maybe, maybe we make a list of things that we're not going to like.
Yeah, I mean, we've started a list, and yeah, it's not.
I think.
Nice.
Nice.
I'm glad you guys had to make it.
We'll just have to bite the bullet and.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah. Bathrooms are gonna be closed from certain hours.
How much time do we have to talk about this before it's the golden rule? Like, I, I mean, I have concerns.
Well, so this is the hard part. Like, like Lauren said, our wage and fringe page and debt is really the first step in tracking our budget, so I really need.
An answer.
An answer if you want two and a half percent, three percent, or something different. Um, you know, like Jeff said, historically, we have tried to match the union. Increases, um. You know, obviously, the union increases have gotten bigger every year, so. I don't know, I can't tell you.
Could we see the, the potential cut list before we moved on for two and a half or three, or would you like to do this first?
This is gonna kind of deter, I mean.
This is what's.
You gotta see the whole budget, right, before we can start creating a cut list, because we don't even know where, like.
Not even what we're gonna cut. I mean, that's gonna be the worst part.
You guys are gonna be sweating out this.
I mean, it's not gonna be like.
Oh, yeah, that's easy. Let's look at that. I mean, it's going to be decisions that.
What do you need from us?
I need to know if you want two and a half percent, three percent, or something different. That's what I need to think.
Well, there's only a six thousand dollar difference, right?
Do three.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna know until you, till you give us the budget. Now, the last two years, we've dipped in. To the accumulated.
To balance.
That's right.
But we haven't actually used it.
Hmm. Well, th- this is, this is just me.
I know.
And, and you arm wrestling over what's the process. I, I would like all the interest that you possibly can not have to allocate on by December first. I, I would like all the interest that you possibly can not have to allocate on, by December first. Because if we wait till the end of the year, then we don't know what, you know, then we're into January, and we've already made all the decisions. Know what that is when that gets transferred. And, and so that, so, so, so we know how many dollars we've got to spend that are coming from interest. Because they, I'm, I'm opposed to having interest, which is. Periodic, we, we just have, use it for salaries and things like that. I'm opposed to that. Because at the point where it finally runs out, then you say we're taking the money back. How good is that? I mean, then you got him.
We have budget lines that show the interest every single.
But some single things can come out of that.
Yeah, I mean, so, like, for the general fund, for example, like. We have an interest line in the general, and I know you want to see all the interest coming, I get that, but like. For the purpose of example, we have a revenue line in the general fund that shows just the interest that we get. So we are over budget on lines below in expense. That interest is helping offset that.
I haven't, I haven't looked in a while, so I mean, all, all I want is clarity about what's in there. And what can we use it for? Like, in this capital budget, we've got several things, forgot what they were. Well, they're, they're individual items. And we talk about borrowing for them. Well, let's use, because it's an individual item, it's a singular thing. Use a singular asset, namely interest, to pay for that.
Yeah, after the last, not this audit, but a lot of it before, our auditors have figured out we had about five hundred thousand dollars of unassigned dollars. So that would be just actual surplus, I think, is what you like to have.
I'm a, I'm a hard-nosed about what that surplus means.
So that.
And, and your, your business isn't so hard.
For our auditors, we have, we had in twenty-twenty-three about five hundred thousand dollars of unassigned funds. That's what I know.
That's different than interest, though.
No, because the interest goes in. Yeah, it's basically at the end of the year.
We aren't gonna resolve this on company time here. That, that is a separate thing. Um, so I, I think do, do the, do the three.
You mostly? Pretty mostly?
Yes.
I'll second.
Hey. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
You can't, you already go.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, I didn't see, considering the dozen billion board salaries.
Oh, Lord.
After, just this, luckily, and I think we just passed this along.
Nothing changes, right?
Is it, is this, is this the same? Is this the same?
Or can I like this? Uh, so I just included the current language, because I didn't know where you guys wanted to go. I'm happy to draft. Give ourselves a range at this point.
You don't, I mean, you only have to do something if you're changing, if you're leaving.
But what, are these the current numbers?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Question.
So.
Is do you want to lower it? We're always fighting for money. That's the time everyone's been donating.
Once that happens. Just to be clear, a couple of board members did request the discussion on this. Um, and it has not been updated for a very, very long time. Um, and to be clear, we can't. Update it this year, as the language says, it has to be not in your term. So really, it would impact twenty-twenty-six. So you're thinking about future, whatever this board is in twenty-twenty-six.
They'll have their own problem if they leave it.
Yeah.
Um, I think everybody's individual about this. Some people think that they should, some people think they shouldn't. I think leave it the way it is, and if you were, and then you decide.
Me?
No, me.
Oh.
You, you give me a check, I decide what I do.
Maybe it's one of those.
Yeah.
Unnecessary.
I spend it? No, I give it to somebody? I don't know. I give it to the library? I don't know.
Hey, that's a good method.
So you want me to put an action taken or?
Then we turn the lights on, and we write down what.
They pass their vote.
So would we just? Take no action? Not actually required, okay? Uh, item D, considerations discussion with W P P I energy board appointments. Lauren?
Yep, this is, uh, given that Joe has resigned, he was the alternate to the W P P I energy board, I'd like to. Keep Kevin as our, the director, and I would like to slot in Bill as the alternate.
I move to do that. Something like Kevin, uh.
Mike, you second him? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Item E, considerations discussion of Bill's logo.
Okay.
Okay, the second. Was running on the field and diving on it. I thought it was really a great experience.
Sorry, keep going.
They've got a logo. There at the football field, this on not quit.
Yes, yeah.
It says what?
It's stunning logo.
Oh, it says new glares.
Yeah.
And I, the, the one that we've, I, 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 you know, there's an argument that says municipalities all ought to present themselves the same way. And since ours is already in, uh, high-tech grass. It's, it's like this first one, but I think it's a little more elaborate than this.
So.
But I, I just think we ought to, we ought to look like this. The, the school's already kind of set the pace, right? We can slightly like it or not like it, but I'm more comfortable if we're all looking.
Yeah.
So you're, you're, you're designing it from the school? You're saying you should kind of go.
Same, same typeface.
Oh. And which is that? I haven't seen the school one.
Come on out there, I'll throw the ball and you could die.
So in my opinion.
Both of you do that.
I, I actually really like this typeface.
Yeah, that was my.
I think that's a nice combination of like, simple, but also like has some flair.
And it gives some information.
Yeah, I like having Wisconsin on it.
And I like the flags, and I like the, the, add more of an active, um, uh, font. Oh, yeah.
You know, but I like the end the way it is. Anyway.
Which one are you talking about?
Number two.
Number two. Yeah. I like that one.
I like the first one, too.
First one is, yeah.
It was closer to the school.
This one right here.
Yeah, yeah, it just looks more.
I think the flags look good.
Yeah. So where do you put the flags?
Break, you know, the.
Where the shield is?
Make them fit.
Do, okay, so compare this to page.
Do, do, all you can do is change the font on what you got.
I know, I just wanted to. Compared to page forty-two. Which is a more simplified version of that. I only say that because.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. I only say that because I don't love the black around the red.
The part that looks like the school to me.
I love the established things too, that's on.
Yeah, that's right. That's the one the village was established. New glares may have been, if you did. But the village was incorporated in.
This is one that was incorporated, I think eighteen fifty.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Oh, yeah, if you read the time down there.
I feel like maybe we should just take it out, because people that, well, they agree, yeah. But nineteen oh one is on the official seal of the village.
I can't wait for Facebook to attack that, so.
Attack all of it?
Let's just get rid of that. I like the clean one without the weird persevere.
And you could easily put one flag off of each side of the shield.
Yeah, but it's kind of weird to put a Swiss flag next to it.
Yeah, you're not. Maybe we could take the shield away and just turn it and play.
I'll just camp the shield.
You gotta have your.
That's good.
That is good.
Even in a logo?
I did it online, and I had the, the, uh, V F W in my front door.
On a logo?
Yeah. Yeah. But I put the Swiss flag on top. Well, it's the. It, it doesn't have to be.
What do you guys also think about the village hall one?
Fine, until you turn on the village hall.
I just feel like those don't look polished enough.
Number forty-two.
To be.
Forty-two. I just take that shield. Can't do forty-five degrees, put another shield right next to it with the American flag on.
Say that again, Mike. Forty-two.
Forty-five degree can on the shield, so it's tilted a little bit. Put another shield right next to it, same thing, tilt it the other way, put a American flag on it.
And then take out the nineteen oh one or leave it?
Sure.
Take it out.
That way you don't have to deal with conflict.
How about even Wisconsin where that is?
Oh, yeah.
God, some people, new glares, where is that?
What, what's with, what's with nineteen oh one? What does that relate?
We're incorporated in nineteen oh one, allegedly. Apparently, yeah. The original seal. I like the nineteen oh one.
Everything we say, a hundred and fiftieth anniversary, all here.
Yeah.
And you had, you had people coming from all over the world, she saw where her hundred and fiftieth.
I, I didn't do.
In the little park.
So it sounds like. We like this one with some additional adjustments.
Yes. Sure.
We like the simplicity, but we want American flag. And we want to say Wisconsin.
Mike say again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two shields on top.
Got it.
Forty-five.
But maybe they should give us an option of the other shield somewhere else that they think makes sense, in case two shields next to each other doesn't look.
Okay.
But you have a flag, do you need the shield?
Well, we won't be doing flags, we'd only be doing shields.
We want, we want a Swiss flag and American flag, or a Swiss shield and American shield.
We don't want to get into the flag problem with, uh, that.
Why do we need the American flag? Everyone knows we're American. Is that a problem? People don't.
If it's a shield, it's not a flag.
Good question.
Yeah, why do we need?
Yeah, we want to do the American one, then we have.
And now people don't know where they live.
I mean, we could just say.
No, we can, no, because they're a town. The village thing, I'll put my foot down, because I'll spend forty hours a week corrupting people.
Do we need the American flag? I mean, that's really unpatriotic, I'm sorry.
But I, I don't think so, but I wanna.
I had a long time friend who was.
Established a settlement in the U S.
And he printed the Sears catalog. And the question always came up was, what was the cover? And I, he said, I take it, when I'm ready to go, I take it to the chairman of the board. It doesn't ma, I think the chairman of the board of Sears makes the decision about the cover, and he said, yeah, because every goddamn member on the way up has an opinion. So I want Roger to make the decision. Yes, I move that Roger makes the decision about this.
Haven't designed it with the way Mike wanted them.
Do you want the American flag? Or no?
Because if you don't do the American flag, we just agree on number forty-two, and we don't.
So. So you don't care one way or another, because the American flag is on there?
No. I think it looks too busy.
I mean, I kind of like the American flag, it's just.
But you can, there's, there'll still be flag. I think everyone knows.
American shield. We were talking in American shield, not a flag.
Does American have a shield?
Well, what if we split the difference on the bottom, we put Wisconsin comma, USA. I'm a hundred percent serious.
Wisconsin, USA was something I was thinking of too.
We take out the established nineteen oh one, we put Wisconsin, USA, and be done.
It's a tiny bit unpatriotic to not have an American.
Keep in mind that, like, the library has Swiss, the utilities has only.
Any other towns that have the American flag in their logo?
We know.
You don't care about them, they're not as good as us.
Why don't you say, I sit down and put it to you privately, and we'll go with whatever.
I kind of like Wisconsin, USA, though. I think it's a good compromise.
I agree, we should have that in there.
Okay, we could just do that, and just keep it the way it is.
Why? Why? That's redundant.
Yeah, it is.
But then. What else is there of Wisconsin?
It makes, it appeases the flag people.
But you're right.
You guys go ahead.
Well, we'll figure it out.
But when we bring it back, that's. We're not gonna even talk about it.
That's right.
No zip code. For the time call, blah, blah, blah. Item A, considerations discussion resolution twenty-four twenty-one for appointment in the full-time public works labor. Forty-four.
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Here and now, all in favor, say aye. Close, most carriers. Uh, no parts of, uh, public works, public safety, consideration, just. Consideration discussion, ordinance twenty-four ten, section two seven eight dash two, the municipal, the municipal clear. Boulevard for terrorist area definition.
Paul just wanted to clear up the language, right?
Yep.
So we're good with that.
Clear it up in line with, uh, what we currently.
Right.
We had.
What, what he's been doing.
And then it was found as like a, the verbiage of it made it much more complex, we just started taking care, not taking care of trees. Uh, right.
I'll make a motion to move that.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All in, most carriers. Anything else? Uh, what? There is no precedence for sure. Well, I can bring up something, just real quick. Before COVID, we always said pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag. After COVID, we got away with it. Would any word numbers like go back to that or not? Give us a thought, and we can talk about it next week.